Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Commissioners meeting. And everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reading, approval of a reading of the minutes of the last meeting? Make a motion to approve. Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Okay, no one? Thank you. Resolution 22022, approving current payables.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 345324-346521 inclusive, totaling $4,974,162.68. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $13,715,223.52. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on the current payables? Entertain a motion to approve. Motion. The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220207.
Approving the filing of a grant application to support the election security project, whereas Lackawanna County is committed to administering fair and equitable elections within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Governor's Center for Local Government Services through the Election Security Grant Program to be used specifically for expenses incurred in both the primary and general elections, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to this election security grant project. And now therefore be it resolved, this 31st day of August 2022, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby approve and ratify the submission of this application to the Election Security Grant Program. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak about that is our Director of Elections, Ms. Elizabeth Hopkins.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Act 88 was passed to establish the Election Integrity Grant Program, and the grant is being administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. As Brian said, the grant is to be used for the county for the administration of elections. One main component of the grant is to assist with the funding to ensure that the pre-canvassing and canvassing of mail-in and absentee ballots is completed and reported on Election Day. The allocation for Lackawanna County is $744,853. These funds will certainly assist the election office with the cost to execute the election in a timely and efficient manner.
I think it should be noted, this is specifically for this upcoming general election and the next primary election.
And the next one, right. Two elections. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Elizabeth? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. The question, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 220208.
Authorizing the filing of the local share account grant applications, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of the various agencies as detailed. Number one, the Abington Area Joint Recreational Board, $74,550 for replacement of the safety surfacing of the bottomless playground. Number two, the Delmore Missy League, $133,516.95 for field lighting. Number three, the East Scranton Little League, $240,000 for lights, cameras, and automated sports broadcasting system. Number four, the Friendship House, $249,035 for building renovation project. Number five, the Scranton Veterans Memorial Stadium Fund, $27,857 for the arch sign for Memorial Stadium. Number six, the VFW Jessup Post, 5544, $66,511 for construction of multiple projects, windows, doors, flooring, boiler replacement, sidewalks, and blacktop filling. Number seven, the Waverly Community House, $110,000 for an HVAC replacement project. Number eight, the West Scranton Alumni Wrestling Association, $198,000 for the multipurpose training facility improvements. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Accounts Grants, and now therefore be it resolved, on this 31st day of August, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of these applications to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak about that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution is authorizing the submission of the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program, application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of eight agencies totaling over $1.1 million. The LSA Grant Program continues to provide support and enhance community and economic well-being for communities and important projects across Lackawanna County. Any questions?
These are not our grants at all. They come from Monroe County from the gambling.
Correct.
Correct. Anybody have any questions?
And we administer on their behalf if they are awarded.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Resolution 220209.
Warring the ARPA construction contracts for the elevator modernization project, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following American Rescue Plan Act construction contract for the Lackawanna County Government Center Elevator Modernization Project, General Construction Otis Elevator Company, 7355 William Avenue, Allentown, Pennsylvania, 18106, with a total bid of $678,455. Number two, the Electrical, Urban Electrical Contractors, 801 Williams Street, Delmore, PA, 18510, with a total bid of $49,900. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again here is Director Sacco.
As a result of a fair and equitable bidding process, this resolution states that the county is entering into a general construction agreement with Otis Elevator Company and an electrical service agreement with Urban Electrical Contractors for the Lackawanna County Government Center Elevator Modernization Project. These services totaling $728,355 will be paid for with American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist in responding to the ongoing repercussions caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The reconstructed elevators are necessary to maintain sufficient traffic flow throughout the building to allow for social distancing and to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The new elevators will also have a UVC germicidal filtration unit to support the public health response. Any questions? And it's, the elevator's right there.
Right.
One's not working.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution 220210.
Ratifying an application for Lehi De Lahey Bulletproof Vest Partnership. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify and approve the application for the Patrick Lahey Bulletproof Vest Partnership Funding on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. Whereas if awarded, the Patrick Lahey Bulletproof Vest Partnership Funding will cover the reimbursement of up to 50% of the total cost of 38 bulletproof vests that are needed for the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office Detective Division and the Lackawanna County Prison, with a maximum allowable funding amount of $20,660.75. Whereas Lackawanna County is hereby authorized, Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire, to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Patrick Lahey Bulletproof Vest Partnership Application in the maximum allowable funding amount of $20,660.75. And now therefore be it resolved by the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, that is hereby approve the submission of this application, and is hereby resolved by the authority of the same at the District Attorney of said municipality. Authority be authorized and directed to accept, to sign the acceptance of this award. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the District Attorney, Mr. Mark Powell.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is simply a grant application. It is a highly competitive grant that we have sought before unsuccessfully but are seeking again. It will defray the costs of bulletproof vests for both our Lackawanna County detectives and Lackawanna County prison personnel. If awarded, certainly from the District Attorney's Office, we would fund the remaining 50% from funds separate and apart from the county primarily or funds through forfeiture.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Powell? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 220211.
Accepting the Borough of Justice Assistance Award. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept an award on behalf of the District Attorney's Office for the Borough of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year 2022 Bernie Discretionary Community Project Funding and Bernie Discretionary Grants Program. Whereas, the overall goal of the BJAF Fiscal Year of 2022 Bernie Discretionary Community Project Funding and Grants Program is the creation of the Lackawanna County Gang and Gun Reduction and Intelligence Project in order to serve the diverse population of Lackawanna County through aggressive intelligence collection, investigation, and prosecution efforts, efforts targeted specifically toward gun, gang, and drug-related crime. And whereas Lackawanna County is hereby authorized, Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire, to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the acceptance of the BJAF Fiscal Year 2022 Bernie Discretionary Community Project Funding Bernie Discretionary Grants Program in the amount of $2 million. Now therefore be it resolved, at the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, to hereby approve the acceptance of this award, and is hereby resolved, the authority of the same at the District Attorney of said municipality, authority be authorized and directed to sign the acceptance of this award. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again here is District Attorney Powell.
Thank you. This is a grant we were successful on. It's a significant grant, probably the largest grant in the history of the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office. It's $2 million, designed to aggressively address gun and gang violence in Lackawanna County. The funds are approved. We need to implement those. They're available in October. There is a long process for hiring additional detectives and staff, which we're anxious to do, and this is the first step in that progress. We'll be back before you, before our Salary Board, to obtain approval from the positions, but they will be grant-funded personnel positions, and I would therefore ask for your approval in order that we can get started.
Great. All right. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Powell? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. 220212.
Ratifying a grant application to the United States Department of Justice. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify and approve the submission of a grant application to the United States Department of Justice, Borough of Justice Assistance, on behalf of the District Attorney's Office for Fiscal Year 2022 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program. Whereas, the overall goal of Lackawanna County Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site Program grant application is to support additional data collection and analysis, identified fatal overdose case reviews, program evaluation, and recommendation implementation associated with the Lackawanna County Overdose Fatality Review Team, all with the overarching goal of reducing fatal overdoses, overdose deaths throughout Lackawanna County. Whereas, Lackawanna County is hereby authorized, Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire, to accept, sign, authorize, and all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the BJAF Fiscal Year 2022 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program Grant Application in the amount of $1.3 million. Now therefore be it resolved by the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, that is hereby approve the submission of this application, and is hereby resolved by the authority of the same at the District Attorney of said municipality, authority be authorized and directed to sign the acceptance of this award. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is District Attorney Mark Powell.
This grant is our overdose fatality review team grant, which we do have in place, but we are requesting this motion in order to extend it an additional three years. This is a highly successful program where we review overdose deaths, gather data in Lackawanna County, and then implement procedures to better address our ongoing drug problem. Our OFR team was recognized as one in 10 in the country to be a mentor program for other OFR teams. That was just awarded last week. It's working. It needs to continue, and this motion would allow us to extend and sustain that highly successful program.
Okay. Sounds like a great job on that, Mark. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 220213.
Ratifying a grant application to the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify and approve the submission of a grant application to the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention for the Fiscal Year 2022 Opioid Affective Youth Initiative. Whereas, the overall goal of Lackawanna County Opioid Affective Youth Initiative Grant Application is to establish a robust and multi-disciplinary drug-endangered children alliance in partnership with the National Alliance of Drug, National Alliance for Drug Endangered Children, with the goal of identifying and implementing initiatives to provide effective linkage to prevention, intervention, diversion, and treatment programs and strategies to children, youth, and families impacted by opioid and other substance use disorders throughout Lackawanna County. Whereas Lackawanna County does hereby authorize Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire, to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award, and the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission for the Fiscal Year 2022 Opioid Affective Youth Initiative Grant Application in the amount of $750,000. Now therefore be it resolved by the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, that is hereby approve the submission of this application, and is hereby resolved by the authority of the same at the District Attorney of said municipality, authority be authorized and directed to assign the acceptance of this award. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, District Attorney Powell.
Thank you. This is a new grant application, and again, highly competitive, but specific to our needs here in Lackawanna County, specifically addressing our youth, where we know we have to focus our attention. We're not correcting things at an early age. We're really losing a battle or fighting a battle that is often too difficult to overcome. So I hereby request approval of this motion to allow us to apply for this additional, well-needed money to address our younger population.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Powell? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 220214.
Ratifying the Police Traffic Services Enforcement Grant Application. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify and approve the submission to PENDOT for the 2022-2023 Police Traffic Services Enforcement Grant Application. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify and approve the PENDOT 2223 Police Traffic Services Enforcement Grant Application in the amount of $184,478.47. Whereas, the overall goal of the Police Traffic Services Enforcement Program is to save lives by reducing the number of crashes involving injury or fatality, and to improve public safety on the roadways within Lackawanna County. And whereas Lackawanna County is hereby authorized, Lackawanna County District Attorney Mark Powell Esquire, to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant award. Now therefore be it resolved by the authority of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, and is hereby resolved by the authority of the same at the District Attorney of Lackawanna County be authorized and directed to sign the acceptance of this award. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is District Attorney Mark Powell.
This is an existing and longstanding effort with the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office and PENDOT to make our roads safer. This grant funds and will fund our DUI stops, our roving patrols, and generally promote public safety on our highways. Therefore, request approval of this motion.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, Mr. Powell, Resolution 220219. You've been busy.
Authorizing Lackawanna County RASA project grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the District Attorney's Office submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the 2324 Fiscal Year of Lackawanna County Victim/Witness Rights and Services Act, Victims of Juvenile Offenders Crime Grant in the amount of $349,842. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
This is a longstanding grant also. It employs and helps support five personnel and our victim advocates through the DA's office. We are requesting equal funding to last year, with $316,785, which supplements a federal VOCO grant, where we also receive funding for the same services to offset and defray any Lackawanna County budgetary issues for those five employees.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Powell? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. Resolution 220215.
Approving a juvenile probation grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Juvenile Court Judges Commission Grant Fiscal Year 22-23 for the Department of Juvenile Probation in the amount of $247,306. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Chief Juvenile Probation Officer, Ms. Cindy Cummings.
Good morning, Commissioners. As of July 2013, the Lackawanna County Juvenile Probation Department has participated in the Juvenile Court Judges Commission Service Grant. This grant assists our department with the implementation and development of the Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategy. This is a statewide approach to develop a unified level of services for youthful offenders, build stronger relationships with families, schools, and community-based service providers. This approach helps reduce recidivism, uses evidence-based practices when treating juveniles while protecting the community. These strategies have been utilized for the past several years, and we will continue to improve the delivery of services at no additional expense to our department or to the county.
Wonderful. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 220218.
Thank you, Cindy. Appointments to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority. Eugene Prashinsky, Region 7, 596 Rocky Glen Road, Music, PA 18507, to fill an unexpired term of Mr. Mercatelli, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31 of this year, 2022. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna River Basin Sewer Authority. Joe Brady, Region 1, 303 Sixth Street, Vandling, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Paul Ruddy, Region 2, 680 Rural Road, Mayfield, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. And Peter Laurinini, Region 5, 1123 Church Street, Jessup, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
There is an issue with this resolution because of the timing of the appointments and the expiration dates. During the past few years, I spoke with the solicitors early. Yes, they all shouldn't expire on the same date. The first one, Mr. Mercatelli, is fine. The other ones, though, we're going to have to adjust the dates accordingly to meet the law so that they are staggered, not, they were let to be expired at the same time by previous administrations. So it is something that's going to have to be addressed. Mr. Rigerio, I think, can speak about this, and we are going to have to amend this resolution.
Are you going to amend it today, or are you going to table it today?
Well, I think we can...
No, you don't need to table it for today.
We can put them back on.
Yeah, you can put them back on. So, you know, what occurs is they do need to be staggered, based on however many members are on the board. I believe these are four-year terms. So in essence, each year, depending on how many members are on the board, there should be a new reappointment or a new appointment. So we can move forward today. The board can take action on these appointments, and then all we'll do is we'll go back and we'll track these three appointments back to their original appointment date, and we'll be able to calculate when their expiration dates actually occur. And we'll do that for the remaining board members so that everyone then is in sync with how it is supposed to occur. It happens sometimes, you know, if past administrations don't reappoint at the time when the terms expire and they're allowed to remain, then sometimes those new reappointments are not done in conjunction with their actual appointment or reappointment date. So it's not unusual. It needs to be corrected. We can fix it, and it will not...
I should have spoken with you about it before, Chief Jeffers. I did speak with the solicitors.
It's not bothering me.
Yeah, no. And it does not impact anything that we're doing today.
And I question if it was something we did need to table or not, and if we could just move forward.
We can.
Basically, we're putting them back on. The timing of when they expire is going to change, and we can do that accordingly.
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? And entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220220.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna Redevelopment Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Redevelopment Authority. Aaron Whitney, 1125 Autobahn Drive, South Abington Township, 18411, to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Scrip, term to begin immediately and expire this year at December 31, 2022. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 31, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
This is another one where there's, there was a retirement of someone from the chamber, and this is the chamber's choice to replace that particular person. So it's a good thing, and we are glad to work with them closely. And on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
The question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodawan at Scranton. I missed the last prison board meeting on August 17, and I know this isn't the prison board, but you are members of the prison board, and I need to compliment you on something you did in your last meeting, and that is approving a recommendation that Gary DeVilio made on investing the $600,000 in the canteen funds plus two CDs, which are maturing later this year. And what basically happened was, is you found a higher interest rate. Now that interest rates on investments are rising. And just to sum up what the paper reported, combining the money from both CDs and the $600,000 in a single investment in December could yield $28,000 in interest income next year. So I take my hat off to you, ladies and gentlemen, that is the way to run a railroad. You've done good. Everybody wins in this, the taxpayer, the inmates, everybody. Speaking of winners, just to remind you that right now, the Friends of the Scranton Public Library are conducting their quarterly book sale at the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of Crunch Gym on the second floor. You can get a hardcover book that might sell for as much as $50 or $60 retail for $2. You can get CDs and DVDs and children's books, everything. Again, it's a win-win proposition. The library wins, and it takes in funds for operating the system. Incidentally, those profits are earmarked for children's programming. The public wins because they get books at a tremendously discounted discount value. And even the tax man wins because he gets 6% sales tax. So it's a good thing. Best Italianas coming up. I expect to see all my newborn Italian friends coming over, like Jerry Nateriani with his red hair. Debbie, I expect to see you there.
I think Jerry is part Italian, aren't you?
I think Jerry is part Italian, aren't you?
Christopher Chumake.
He is part Italian, even though he doesn't look it.
I know. And speaking of winning, have we found a replacement for Tom Durkin?
Working on it.
We have, and we're still, there's an issue with it. It's not our issue.
Those are big shoes to fill.
Yes, they are, and that's the reason it's been very difficult.
Okay, keep working on it. The only question I have is, what's the status of getting more bids for the murals on the back end of this government center?
We actually looked into that yesterday.
I don't know the answer to that at this point. I know we're...
We received about five or six. Maureen McGuigan and I and Brian talked about it for about two hours yesterday. There's an issue with the corrugated metal. We ran into a lot of problems. Many artists didn't want to submit. Many artists that are excellent mural...
Well, you don't normally do a mural on corrugated metal, let's face it.
Well, there's a lot of fantastic spray paint artists, some that did artwork at the World Trade Center on corrugated metal surrounding the Freedom Tower, so we even reached out to them. So we're looking into some other options now.
Okay, well, it's moving along. Thank you. See you at the book sale.
See you at the book sale.
Marie Schumacher, resident of the East Mountain of Scranton. I'm going to read you five things and see if you can answer what a nonprofit would earn if they could say yes to every one of these items, okay? First, advance a charitable purpose. Two, donate or render gratuitously a substantial portion of its services. Three, benefit a substantial and indefinite class of persons who are legitimate subjects of charity. Four, relieve the government of some burden. And five, operate entirely free from private profit motive. Anybody know what that would earn you if you were a nonprofit?
I do not.
Nobody knows, okay. Well, the answer is you earn tax-exempt status. Now, I don't want to say any nonprofit pick on any one or any handful, but I would believe that all of the nonprofit, all of the nonprofits that are not, yeah, all of the nonprofits that are not paying property taxes in Lackawanna County cannot answer all of these five questions. Now, Pittsburgh, a time ago, did put out a letter to everybody who was on the exempt status to prove, say, what their position was on each of these five. And now that Scranton has reached the point of 38% of its properties are tax, property tax exempt, puts a burden on those who are not a nonprofit. And I am asking that you do one of two things or both, and one is to put out the, they call it a HUP letter, Pittsburgh did, it was a hospitalization, utilization, something. And they cleaned up their records. And also, there is someone I read about in the paper recently who is trying, making a second stab at taking the monies that are being charged for the, to recover from the Johnston or Johnstown, what was it, River? I don't know. I was in California.
Hang on, break down.
Oh, okay. That was, now, that was 1937. I think it's complete. And this, these legislators, there's been one in the past and there's one currently, who are trying to get some of that money and give it to these municipalities that are getting smothered. And, but I would also like you to do this HUP test and send one, a letter to every one of these nonprofits, so...
You can check into that, Marie, but some of that, I think, is above our ability to do. We can check into it, and we'll make it a point to follow up on your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner?
Just an update. I know I've had a few questions on the PENFED building purchase. We're waiting on, I guess, just funding from the state. We have our accounts set up, ready to go, and that seems to be the holdup. But I didn't know what the deadline was on our end.
I think we have that, the deadline extended, and the funds is accurate, Mr. Jeffers or Mr. Roggerio?
That is correct, Mr. Commissioner. We do have an extension with PENFED, and that is in conjunction with our anticipated receipt of the state funds, the grant monies. Those should be coming in within the next couple of weeks. We have all the paperwork prepared, as you indicated. The account is set up and ready to go. Once we get that, we can conclude the sale and we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Go forward.
Yeah, yeah. Soon as the funds are here, we can immediately schedule the closing and conclude the matter.
Okay, and I know, to answer Joan's question about the CFO, I know we are anxiously waiting. You know, it's budget season. I've been sitting in on all the budget hearings. You know, I still have questions from last year that I haven't gotten answered yet, so I'm waiting, well, I'm waiting. So as soon as someone gets here and to fill those big shoes, we'll get moving forward on that. With the tax-exempt folks, I mean, the city of Scranton too, any of the businesses or the places in the city would be up to the city, I think, to look at that. Isn't that correct, I would think? I don't think we have jurisdiction over the city, but I would like to know if they're all legit.
Mr. Roggerio?
Yeah, and to Marie's point, the, not the issue, but you have to keep in mind that the 501(c) status, which is typically the nonprofit or not-for-profit status that someone is designated under the IRS code, there's about 17 or 18 different subsections of the 501(c) nonprofit section, is a determination that's not made by municipalities. That's a determination that's made by the Department of State and the IRS at the time that the application's filed. So any challenge related to that, not that it cannot arise from the municipality, but it would typically arise either through the Department of State or more so from an IRS audit or issue where they'd be requested to show those five points that Marie stated. So doesn't mean a municipality cannot look into it, but it would be that if they were going to, it should originate out of the municipality in which the property is located. Because as we all know, there's typically three taxing bodies for any property. So I would recommend that if it was going to be looked at, it would originate out of that particular municipality.
Thank you. And yes, LaFesta, I will be there. I work in the porcetta stand, so come look for me there. I'm usually in the back, so you have to look.
When are you there?
Well, whenever they want me, so we'll see. I bounce in and out, so sometimes I get to walk around, sometimes I get stuck back there, but I will be there, so looking forward to it.
I think you should tag it, yes, LaFesta.
What's that?
Yes, LaFesta.
Yes, LaFesta. And yes, I am part Italian, too, so...
And Commissioner Dominic?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Under that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Happy Labor Day, everyone.
Happy Labor Day.